Come to order. Student with allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, first on the agenda, the approval of the agenda, may I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I move to amend the agenda slightly. The whole call to executive session at the bottom of the agenda should be exemption number two, not three.
Yeah. I agree with that. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of changing the exemption to number two from number three say aye?
Aye.
All right, other than that, do we have approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, as amended. Very good. All right, so can I also get a motion to approve the open session minutes of September 23rd, 2019?
Motion to approve the open session minutes from September 23rd, 2019.
Any discussion on that? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Third, motion to approve the open session minutes from October 3rd, 2019.
Motion to approve open session minutes, October 3rd, 2019.
Second?
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, student comments? Do we have?
I don't know where Owen is, unfortunately it doesn't appear that he's here.
Okay, we'll have to deal with that until next week. We miss Owen's bright shiny face. Next on the agenda, community comments. Do we have any community comments this evening? Anybody? Seeing none, we move on to superintendent's comments.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. First off, just as an FYI, once again, similar to last fiscal year, it's reported that for the FY19 state budget, there is approximately a $1 billion surplus. So within the last couple of weeks, Governor Baker has filed legislation for a $651 million supplemental budget. I wish I could say all of that is going to fund education across the Commonwealth. However, a sizable percentage of that is going into both a tax reduction fund and then also the stabilization or the rainy day fund, approximately $168 million. However, the thing that could affect Menden Upton is the proposal of $15 million of one-time funds for another round of school security infrastructure grants. If you recall, we were in a similar situation with the FY18 budget and we were able to obtain a one-time only grant of $29,000 to upgrade the camera system here at MISCO. So our game plan, once they put out an RFP, will be to do the same exact thing, this time for Clough Elementary School. And that way, all four of our schools will...
Sorry.
You're welcome, Jay. All four of our schools will have up-to-date digitized systems. So very, very hopeful and optimistic about that. Secondly, I'd like to report out once again, as we do every year, we have upcoming, within the next month, the joint MAS-C, MAS-S conference in Hyannis this year, November 6th to 9th. And usually, we have two or three members of the committee to attend. I find that it's always very much high-quality professional development, both for school committees and superintendents. I find a lot of those nuts and bolts issues around legal issues, around budget, around governance are usually tackled in a high-quality way. So if you're interested, please contact me or contact Lauren and we'll be sure that you are enrolled. Then next that I have is, I'm going to turn things over to Jay to talk a little bit about the joy that usually is his month of September, and that is completing the FY19 end-of-year report. So, Jack?
All right, so you all had in your packet that wonderful Excel spreadsheet that is what I have to do every September. That is an end-of-the-year report. We need to basically account for every penny we spend. Actually, they ask us around, so I'll say every dollar we spend. And I have to itemize it by buildings, by districts, by instructional expenses. Pretty much any way that you can think of, we have to report it. So that is the detail, all the information that's involved that goes into it. Schedule 1, which is the main tab, basically compiles everything. There's another tab for Schedule 3 that has some macros built into it, so you can pick the schools. And I think there's a Schedule 3 summary tab as well. It's not really, it's just tedious. It's not like, you know, the information is all there. It's not that hard to find. It's just that it's a lot of detail work and going through it and making sure it all matches what's really in the books. And there's always something that I miss, so I keep going over it. So that was submitted to the Department of Ed on the 20th of September, I believe. And then there's a document that Sean signs that just says that we did everything we were supposed to do. So that was turned in. I also included with that a, what's called the combined balance sheet template. That is from the Department of Revenue. That's what I used, part of what I used to submit for E and D certification. That gives you all the breakdown of our balance of all of our funds at the end of June 30th. So that was submitted as well, right around the 20th of September. I did hear from them today that they started to work on it, so hopefully we can maybe make some progress this year and get it done a lot sooner than last year. If there's any questions on any of it, I'm here to answer them. If not, that works for me too.
Can you talk a little bit about excess and deficiency versus our undesigned fund balance? And what those amounts are and what that really means, Jack?
Yeah, if you look at that combined balance sheet, the very, one of the very first tabs is called the combined balance sheet. And that has basically all of our fund balances, all the way through and through. And what you get to at the very end, at the very bottom, it's row 58 actually, is that our undesigned fund balance is $577,842. That's what, that's what comes out of the software. That's how it all balances out here. When they certify E and D, they're going to take out of that anything that they call hits. Now, a hit to them means that, for example, we pay our health insurance in June for the month of July. When we go into the month of July, we move that expense to July and take it out of June. So it's no longer an expense in last fiscal year. But because it was actually sent before June 30th, they take it out of E and D. Doesn't really make sense, it doesn't really matter, but that's what they do. The other thing they hit you for is you have any accounts that have a deficit as of June 30th that the revenue doesn't come in between July 1 and September 30th. So we did have a couple of those, but revenue came in and offset that, so that didn't go as a hit. They also, the $577 takes out what you appropriated out of E and D for the current year's budget. So in reality, that number is 877, 842, which is what our undesigned fund balance is minus the $300 for the E and D appropriation into this year. It's kind of a bookkeeping thing that they do at the Department of Revenue. There is no account in our books that says E and D. It doesn't exist. We have an undesigned fund balance and that's it. But this is the Department of Revenue's process to certify our E and D, which is similar to free cash. When I heard from them today, one of the things they're going to have difficulty with, with not just us, but every school district in the Commonwealth, is all of us received our Chapter 70 money for the month of June on July 1. So therefore, it wasn't in our books as of June 30th, so it's called, you know, accounts receivable. They're going to have problems with that, because in essence, they're going to say that that's a hit. And if that's a hit, then our E and D is going to be just totally wiped out. But I think because we're one of 351 communities that all have the same problem, they're probably going to figure something out. But you never know, the Department of Revenue. Any questions on that? Does that make sense to everybody?
Oh, tons of questions on that, but I can table those till later.
You could ask them now, Sean. Go ahead, ask one.
No, no, I mean, I just...
If you're trying to find logic and common sense to this, that would be...
That's kind of what I'm saying. I don't, I don't think there's anything but questions about that, so I just...
It's the process we go through every year. My, my concern every year is what is our undesigned fund balance? And then what are we appropriating to the fiscal year? I don't really care what E and D gets certified at.
So which, which sheet is that reflected on?
Combined balance sheet, it reflects part of the reality, okay?
Okay.
If you go all the way to the last tab, you will see what's called undesigned fund balance rollover. And that details out everything as well, comes out with the same number. Where you find the so-called hits is in a different spreadsheet that I didn't include for you. But the prepaid health insurance is about $250,000, so they're going to take that off of the $577. So I anticipate our E and D is going to be certified at around $310,000 this year. That's my best guess. Could be a little bit off, because they do some funny things when they actually get to the end. But, and I think I, we said this in the background notes, the bottom line to me is that if E and D is certified at 310,000, say, that's what it is, we're not going to be able to appropriate out of that for FY21. Even though there's more in the undesigned fund balance, and I actually wouldn't recommend appropriating with a balance of 577 either, because that's not enough. That really is your safety net, in case something catastrophic happens during the course of the year. I personally like to see that number at around a million, but it's not there anymore.
Okay.
But the 577 is reflective after the 300?
Correct.
Any more questions on that? All right. We can move on, then?
Actually, one more thing. You'll also have in your spreadsheet, I think for the very first time, the FY20 year-to-date expenditure report. Jay, are there any lines that you'd like to highlight?
I would say everything is fine right now. We've had a lot of maintenance issues over the summer. We're still having problems with the boiler at Nipmuck this year. We have a boiler problem every year this year. It's Nipmuck's issue. So there is some maintenance stuff that's still happening. Beyond that, you know, it's way too early in the year for me to start forecasting where things are going to end up. Lots of supplies have been bought over the summer. Lots of money's been spent. That sheet shows the encumbrance of all salaries, so the bottom line at the end is what's left at this point. As always, I'm concerned about maintenance issues. It seems like every year, stuff just keeps popping up that we don't anticipate.
But today, we haven't had...
Yes, as far as the snow and ice goes, we're in good shape.
But even from a surprise maintenance perspective?
The boilers at Nipmuck, the problem we're having up there is, it's a, there's these firing tubes. I'll give you the Ken lecture on it. And they've cracked over the years. We welded them to repair them. This year, they came to do the same thing and welded them, and it didn't work out well. And water started leaking. They took them apart, rewelded them again. They're still leaking water, so they're still apart, waiting for them to come back and do some more work. The boiler company has told us that this never happens. You know, the people that made the boiler, which is what a sales rep always says, is this never happens. But it is happening. I would tell you that right now, number one in our risk for capital needs is going to be replacing the boilers at Nipmuck.
How old are they?
They're 22 years old.
They're the original.
So they shouldn't, they shouldn't be a problem, quite honestly. 22 years is not a long time, but we're spending thousands of dollars trying to repair them. And if we can't get them fixed, I mean, right now, we're faced with potentially running on one boiler instead of two. So I think that's the thing that we're probably going to be looking at pretty quickly once we get these things together and running again. The other three schools all started up the other day, because they did turn the heat on. Everything seems to be working. So that's, that's basically it. And other than that, you know, we've got roof leaks at Nipmuck. We've got water pipes that are leaking. I think we had a pipe, a couple toilets that were leaking at Clough. We've had a lot of vandalism at this school in the bathrooms, and that seems to be an ongoing issue. It's just, seems like a lot of maintenance stuff.
This is a picture, actually. I believe the picture's worth a thousand words.
Oh, there you go.
This is one of the two boilers. And over the last year or so, they've literally had to cut out a section of it.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a quick fix, but it's probably on its last legs.
Yeah, we've done this kind of repair probably eight to 10 times over the last 10 years. And again, like, you know, the sales rep from Wells McLean, which is who makes this, says, oh, this never happens. Never happens at all. But clearly, it is happening.
Okay. Okay. So next on the agenda, subcommittee updates. We have the superintendent's evaluation subcommittee. An update from that?
So we met on Thursday and Joe presented his status report on schools for the last school year, as well as his self-assessment. So over the next few weeks, we'll aggregate the assessments from all the school committee members and present the end-of-cycle evaluation at our meeting on October 20.
Yeah, so I'd like to apologize, I made a mistake. And actually, it's in the agenda that our next meeting is the 21st, assuming just another two weeks. It's actually in three weeks. It's on the 28th. So I sent out a summary email with all the documents that were shared Thursday night. And I think I put as the deadline, October 17. Up that by a week, it should be October 24. Okay?
So we have, we have our contributions to make between now and then to get materials ready, right? And you'll be sending that out to us, or?
I sent it out about an hour ago, a couple hours ago. And one of the documents is the directions on how to get to teach point.
Good, excellent.
I'd forgotten all that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, next, the budget subcommittee. Bill?
We have a placeholder, because we have time tomorrow to basically go through student and school transportation. That'll be item number two in our series of budget meetings, where we'll talk about and dive into the specifics that drive our cost budget needs. And that at Clough.
Seven o'clock, Clough.
Seven o'clock at Clough.
Clough Library.
Yep, we moved our PTO to six o'clock, still there.
Perfect.
Hopefully, people will go and...
Debbie wanted to stay to learn about the joy that is transportation.
So, so at the end, I forgot in the agenda, do we have, do we have like a summary? Or are we just going to automatically assume that we're going to need to do summaries again after the final budget meeting is done, our final budget series is done?
What do you mean by a summary?
We went over fantastic detail on the special, special education section. And there wasn't a lot of attendance.
Yeah, so I, what I'm thinking is creating a website that has all of the presentations that were given with a very concise summary, so anybody could access it at any time.
Oh, that's excellent. That's excellent.
So I think what you're going to find tomorrow is a presentation delivered by myself and Jay that was exactly like the special education one that Jay and Dennis did three weeks ago.
Yeah, so I just wanted, for anyone who's listening, these are fantastic presentations. I learned a lot about what we're spending and the reasons why we're spending it. So really think everybody should be involved in that. All right, so next on the agenda, new business, presentation of 2019, 2020 Clough and Memorial School Improvement Plans.
Okay, so last meeting two weeks ago, we handled MISCO and Nipmuck School Improvement Plans. So as we do every year, now we have the work of Clough and Memorial. So we're delighted that we have Deb and Jan here this evening. I know in similar, like in similar years, so that there's complete alignment, correct me if I'm wrong, you pretty much have the identical school improvement plan, correct?
Because we are team players.
Okay. So take it away, ladies.
All right, so we worked together once again to align our goals for our school improvement plan with that of the district strategic plan. We selected four goals, first of which is to promote student success and reduce behavior referrals through the development and implementation of Tier SEL, social emotional learning supports and interventions. So what we've done is last year, as you know, we began our RISE/SOAR program. It's worked really well. Our first year of implementation went better than we both expected. It was well-received by staff and parents and the educators. So we are in the process. We both went to a conference in May to learn about the next steps, the next level for us after that first year. We took, about nine teachers, we took, you know, from both schools, so it was a nice collection. And then during the summer and in the last month, we've been working on revising. We surveyed our fourth grade students. We thought they were the most honest, because they were leaving. So we surveyed them at the end of the year to find out, you know, what worked. We had a list of questions, you know, what did you like, what did you not, what do you think we could improve? How did you feel about it? And we got a lot of rich data from that. And then during the summer, we were able to work and make some tweaks to our program this year. Our focus this year is to implement it with preschool and the kindergarten. It's new to them, so we have to start from point zero with everything. With our first to fourth graders, we are reintroducing it. And we train all our staff, not just our teachers, it's our parents, our lunch monitors, our recess monitors. We train the bus personnel. They're very open to how they can help us with the bus safety. We've had our assemblies, our kickoff assemblies, and so we're working on that. We're working to provide training, continual training. Dr. Cohen and Dr. Mariszek have ordered the Onway books for every staff member in the district. Our leadership team is taking this book apart, reading it and reflecting and having some really, really good conversations around resiliency and who we are and how we can, you know, self-care and learning about emotions and talking about what we can do for ourselves and how we can help students. And also, Dr. Cohen's running a book study, so there's several people throughout the district that are also taking part of it. We also have teachers who are doing it within their grade levels. And today, myself, there was conversations in the, by the mailboxes about one of the chapters they're reading. And I was like, oh, yes, if I could have only taped it, it would have been awesome. So it's definitely having its way in the school. And so we're just continuing to work on this and come up with strategies and helping the children. The parents have been really good supporting our programs at home. We let them know when the kids have excelled and when they're earning their little prizes. And the parents, a lot of parents are saying to us that they're using it at home. So we've shared it out at our open houses. The information on our SOAR and RISE are on all the teachers' websites. It's around the buildings. If you walk in our buildings, you'll see it everywhere. So we're really excited about the next phase. We're really focusing a lot on the Tier 2, you know, the next layer of the kids. And I feel between the ABC chapters, working on the child study, the behavior referrals, you know, focusing a lot on the social emotional positive behaviors. We've both definitely seen referrals to our offices less. And trying to understand that, you know, kids don't come to school wanting to be bad is a reason. And we need to really look into that as opposed to looking at what their action is. So I'm excited where we're going with it. And we'll continue to revise. We meet every other week with our groups, so it's a constant. We also, we have our PBS committee. They presented every faculty meeting, so they'll present what we're doing next. We were at, and we always take, you know, people's suggestions. We even have a suggestion box too, where people don't want to speak up at the faculty meetings, so that everyone knows they have a say and we can improve, so.
In goal number two, we are working to increase our capacity as staff regarding beliefs, the cultures, and the context of mind learning and project-based learning. And so to do this and to really give the teachers some guidance and specific goals, literally goals. Jean and I worked together this summer to develop several professional development goals as well as several student learning goals that we shared out with our staff to help in this work. The goals were addressed three areas, social emotional learning, as well as project-based learning and the portrait of a learner. They included the teachers supporting and reinforcing PBIS, becoming more familiar with project-based learning and implementing at least two PBL units in their instruction, as well as becoming very familiar with the different components of Portrait of a Learner and addressing, looking at that, and Jim will be talking more about Portrait of a Learner, but looking at what the competencies are, what we're currently doing, and how we can tweak and redesign some of our units to more fully address that. Around student learning, we are looking for students to demonstrate increased understanding and use of social emotional learning based on our second step end-of-the-year assessment, as well as a reflective online tool, and demonstrate proficiency with at least two criteria elements of the Portrait of a Learner. We've established PBL 101 ambassadors to help teachers understand the difference between doing a project and project-based learning. When I think of doing a project, we see things like the dinosaur dioramas. And project-based learning, as I'm sure you're aware, is far different from that. And so it really started a couple of years ago as kind of a grassroots movement with two or three teachers kind of dabbling in at the elementary level. And last year in particular, I was really impressed with some of the work that some of our youngest kids did around authentic problem solving. We're also focusing on the four shifts, which, of the cloud's four big shifts, moving students from recalling factual information to higher-level thinking, authentic problem solving versus worksheets, student agency, students making choices rather than everything being teacher-controlled, and using technology far more than some of our traditional resources. And so teachers have been working to become much more competent, much more comfortable in these skills.
A third goal is to incorporate Portrait of a Learner into instructional practices at the elementary level. So one of the things, the shift, the big shift for us was that last year, when we created the strategic plan, it was Portrait of a Graduate. And Deb and I struggled a lot with this, because what the message we were sending, everybody at our elementary level felt like it was the high school. It was Portrait of a Graduate. This is what they need to graduate. And so we kept going on, and luckily, we have a good leadership team and they understood our dilemma, and we changed it to Portrait of a Learner. So it really has helped us in getting the word out to parents and to staff and to students that, you know, because little kids don't understand Portrait of a Graduate. So now they're understanding that this is something that we want all learners from preschool to grade 12. So I feel like it aligns us better with changing simple words like that. So we've been introducing it to the staff. Our focus this year, as Mrs. Swain had said, we came up with several sample goals and a lot of our teachers have adopted this goal. They're going to do this anyways, but they, some of them are going to just delve into it a little bit more and share out and be some of our presenters and lead teachers on it. But what we're doing is we are focusing on each of our faculty meetings and during our data blocks with our grade-level teams, focusing on the different elements. And so what we're doing is we are looking at like, okay, taking the different six competencies and say, let's look at the lessons and strategies that we're already doing that are incorporating a mindful learner, solution seeker, you know, collaborator, communicator, and what are we already doing? Because we don't want teachers to think they have to do something different. We want to have them continue to do, but just expand it to the next level. We want them to be able to share with the students and start using this terminology. So you've got this vertige from kindergarten all the way up to the high school that they start learning that, oh, we're doing this, we're a collaborator right now. We're, you know, we're a global citizen. So they're understanding a little bit more. So we're identifying what we're already doing, and then we're going to take it to the next level and start brainstorming other ways that we can implement this into our daily teaching, so it becomes just a practice. In our schools, you'll see on the walls, all the teachers have, have the puzzle pieces or they have the, each component of the competencies up in their room. They presented it open house to the parents to start getting them familiar with it. So they start hearing it themselves. It's on our webpages. We also have, you know, they're going to be putting them up around the buildings, the big words that like Chris Moran does. He's creating, and we've given him our templates of what we want. We've shared them with our school council and we'll be doing it with our PTO as well. So I think the biggest thing for us is to get the Portrait of a Learner out there and communicate it and our expectations. We're all district-wide, chosen to do two Inspired Learning Days. So those are already set, December 11th and April 15th. So we're excited, because it's something that every child and every student will be involved in. All our staff members will be there. So we've already kicked this off with our October, we had a meeting last week with our committee. So we've already kicked this off with our October, we had a meeting last week with our committee, and then on our October faculty meeting this week, we rolled it out to the teachers, so they're starting to think they're going to be surveying their students to get ideas of, you know, what would inspire you, what kind of passions do you have? What do you want to learn about, you know, not just fractions and, you know, math or reading? What would excite you? And then we're going to create our Inspired Learning based around these competencies and things that are going to get the kids a little bit more excited. And we'll get parent involvement, community members involved. So this is, this is a really good goal, and I think the way we have it and the way we're rolling it out with our staff is a way that's going to embrace it and realize it's not one more thing. It's what we're doing, and we're taking it to the next level.
Just to add to that, as exciting as Inspired Learning is, it doesn't come without dilemmas. I am trying to figure out how I'm going to meet the need of the first grader who wants to learn about skydiving. I'm anticipating a little pushback from the parents on that. But the kids are just generating some awesome, awesome ideas. Really exciting. But anyways, fourth goal is to meet the needs of all students with the use of data and co-teaching. And this is kind of tightening up some of the work that we've been doing and taking to the next level and being just a little more purposeful as far as our data analysis and how we're using it. But it's also looking at co-teaching. We have different teams, inclusion, co-teaching teams have changed through the years. And so we're looking at ongoing professional development to make sure that everybody is current. We're also looking to help some of our more veteran teachers that have been working in the team explore and expand their repertoire. So that's part of what we're doing with professional development, so we're looking at a lot of different models. Part of that is encouraging teachers to go to other schools and observe what's happening. But we've also welcomed a number of teams from other districts into both of our buildings to, to do some coaching around co-teaching and inclusion. We're also looking at alternative programming. Teachers, particularly in reading, have been using the Wonders Program, and they're using the special ed component, but they're also looking for some other additional resources. And so that's part of what we're doing. Math the same way. So we want to make sure that everybody has access to the resources that we have in the building and familiarity with the program so that they're able to use them seamlessly. We continue to grow our universal screenings, looking at different assessments that teachers recommend, that we've developed, and then some standards such as DIBELS and SRI. So we're administering those multiple times throughout the school year. And teachers are using data blocks, continue to use data blocks in both buildings. So one, once a week, 40-minute block, grade-level meeting, that they look at. They may look at student work, they may look at assessment data, they may create data, they may administer assessments. But one of the things that Jean and I had talked about this summer that we feel strongly about is bringing it to the next level of SOU, what are you going to do with that data? And we're really, I think we do a really great job around item analysis and data analysis with our NCAS, and we want to bring that to a more granular level, looking at our common assessments, looking at some of the universal screenings, looking for trends, looking for strengths, weaknesses, and then coming up with a plan. So we are in the process of creating a monthly assessment action sheet. We'll be asking teachers to share out with us, what is it that they're looking at? What are they seeing for trends? What are their concerns? And what are they going to do with it, the information? And we see that as a great opportunity for us to share that information vertically with the different grade levels, to give us just some additional insights, some additional information that will be helping, helpful in designing our instruction. I think that sums it up. Questions? Anyone?
She said, I'd love to see some examples of the, of the project-based learning.
Absolutely.
That'd be wonderful.
That would be great. We'll, we'll be back on the screen.
Okay.
To share some of those. I have to say, the way that they've brought, I think of one in particular, the second graders did, Beatrice's Goat was the name of the book. And they had read the book, and initially, they said they collected money through doing chores to help buy a goat for a village, which was great. But then the next year, they took it even further, and they brought people that came in that had goats to talk about what it was like to take care of a goat. They skied with a teacher in Africa where they're going to be buying the goat or sending the goat. It was, it was really quite amazing.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, really neat. So yeah, we'll definitely be back.
Thank you.
She has to go back.
Especially the skydiving.
Right?
We're going to try it out first.
Are those tunnels? I don't know about a first grader, but are those tunnels there?
We're in adventure.
Yes, definitely. All right, so next on the agenda, oh, we have to approve those. I'm sure I'm glad you're there.
It's two straight meetings.
I know, I know. I thought it was...
I knew that we approved the Clough and Memorial School Improvement Plans for 2019, 2020.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we can move on to old business, of which I don't think there is any.
There is none.
So we can move right on to correspondence.
Just two real simple pieces of correspondence. First off, a letter of thanks from our friends at the Upton's Men's Club for our annual assistance and help with the fireworks festival. And then secondly, a notice from the Benedict Upton Custodial Association to announce their intent to start the collective bargaining process for Successor Project. Pretty straightforward.
Good. So next, other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours of the posted meeting. None seen. So future agenda items, we have the Superintendent's Annual Evaluation on October 28th.
28th?
I was going to say, we don't have to leave until 20 minutes.
28th?
Just making sure.
So did you see, just for the, say, for the minutes, information is due by October 21 from the members?
I think I changed it. It should be for the 24th.
24th, thank you.
For the evaluation submission.
Thank you.
So we got a lot of homework as a committee. All right, so that's, that's probably the end of the committee. We are now going to do a roll call to Executive Session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exemption Number Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. The committee will not return to open session. So this is the end of the close of the open session. Roll call vote.
Do you want to?
Sean with his eye. Phil with his other eye. So we will go to closed session now. Thank you very much.
Who made that motion? Did you make a motion in second?
You made a motion.
Sorry, I was just trying to...
I have a motion for that. So we have a second.
Good, but I figured I'd at least have it.